Sorry.
It's okay.
Spring. All right. That's what I just realized. All right. Getting close. All right, there you want to. That'll do. Welcome to the regular meeting of Holotus City Council. It's April 10th at 7:00 PM. I am pleased to state that we have a mayor for the day, Mr. Hudson Hart. He's joining us with us as a winner of a package that I believe is a PTA fundraiser. And we certainly appreciate all the support from their school and thank you for being here. At this time, if you will rise for the invocation, followed by pledge of allegiance to be led by our mayor for the day.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you for our freedom. We thank you that we have a community of people who want to see good things happen here in Holotus. I thank you for the city staff who works hard and sacrificially every day to make this city a special place. Lord, during our meeting tonight, I just asked that as leaders, city leaders, we be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to frustration. We pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. If there is no objection, we're gonna pull item number five and raise it to the top. It's a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And we have representatives here. Yes, dispatch there right there, we search.
To present this year, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week of 2025. Whereas public safety telecommunications were the first and most crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services and a prompt response, police fire, or emergency medical services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week celebrates and honors telecommunications personnel are recognized for their dedicated service in helping those in need through use of telecommunications. And whereas the Holotus Dispatches are highly trained divisions devoted to public safety dispatching and strive for assistance, excellence, and customer service while maintaining the highest level of professionalism. And whereas today, we salute our Director of Emergency Communications, Jamie Oscar, and our Public Safety Telecommunicators Stephanie Weller, Jose Santos, Ashley Hitman, Kristi Garcia, and Andrew Marconi for their selfless and exemplary service, dedication, compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties and remind them that they truly make a difference each and every day as the first level emergency responders to our citizens' businesses and positions. Therefore, I wish right on the behalf of the Mountain City Council by the virtue of the authority of the municipal city Polos, Texas, you hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through 19, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and recognize and commend our dispatchers' service toward. Very much.
Between the small print and the multi-syllable words, I think I should get an award for. Thank you, Fire, for showing up and your support. Appreciate you guys. All right. That'll bring us back to public hearings. At this time, the time is 7:04 PM. And we'll open up the public hearing to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a request from newly homes to replat portions of Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 5, and establish Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 5A by removing residential lots to increase to detention pond areas. Do we have anybody here to speak on that public hearing?
Just the one.
I thought this was for citizens to be heard. No, this is, I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry, Leanna Lada?
Yes.
Just if you don't mind, please state your name and your address for the record and please share your thoughts.
My name is Leanna Lada. I'm a Holotus resident and I live at 11320 Sunset Boulevard. I'm here to address the council members regarding my property that sits directly below the construction that is for this detention pond. And we've been dealing with this for some time now, which includes the flooding that has happened since the construction has happened. This has greatly affected our property. It has created a new holding area that was not there prior to this construction. Originally, when the construction started, there was no containment or very little containment for the dirt and silt and colicia that had run into our side of the section until we tried to get it on, talk to people. Anyway, it's actually diverted the water from where it originally went naturally as the land. We have a detention pond ourselves, which is no longer in use anymore because the construction has diverted it to another area in the easement that we have there. So it is still today. We had rain last week. We had pretty heavy rain. There is still water in that folding area, whereas before, naturally, it drained within a day or so. All the water that is coming and the dirt that came onto the land, I have, as many of the residents do, have a well. And so we do take from that well. And it's not very far from where all the dirt came into our side and now has created this new pond, which could attract animals and mosquitoes and so new hazards and issues that we did not have before. Also, they are directly draining everything into our land. And so there's a large pipe there that's going to, if it floods, going to be pouring into our side of the property. So I would like to have our communication heard with the developers to come and clean up the issue that they've created. And we have so far not heard from them to try and get some sort of communication going so that we can get some sort of cleanup or some sort of restitution to return my property that we work hard for to its original condition. So is that it?
That's three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
So a public hearing weekend versus citizens to be heard can share some information correctly, so.
Exchange dialogue. And I'm gonna pull up the map.
Please do. Thank you.
Maybe she can show us where she's at.
So for just some clarification on your comments, and thank you very much for bringing your comments. So you are against the approval of the retainage?
We would like to see a larger, you know, holding area on that side. Will that actually work? We don't know. There hasn't been any evidence. I think they've tried several times to correct the issue. And I think that's why, you know, this, I'm assuming this is why we're here today to extend it because there was probably some issue before where the water wasn't controlled.
Right. There's an expansion. It still has to be built yet, so.
Right.
And it also sounds a little bit like we have a couple of issues with respect to what you were saying is that it sounds like most of your comments are around concerns about how your property has been affected by
Correct.
problems with their silt fences or their retaining of their soils, of which we do understand and that has been an ongoing process of public works. There have been citations. There have been these fines, these type of things. Nonetheless, in the middle of a rainstorm when dirt's running down the road, subsequent fines or tickets doesn't change the fact that there was dirt running down the road or into your property. So to be certain, we want to make sure that we address any issues. And we don't have public works here, but let's make a point to, oh, I'm sorry. Put my glasses back on. And Justin actually is somebody that's been out there on site and looking at and assessing, let's say, the lack of the proper controls of debris going on there. But Justin, we do want to make sure that the neighboring properties, if they have been affected, we do need to.
Yes, we have been in communication with them. I don't know you specifically, but your address. The general consensus we got from the developers is that as soon as construction is completed, they will clean up these properties. But again, I'll give you my card and then we can make sure that this happens when we get that part down the road.
Thank you.
And these items in your comments about that are really kind of secondary. What we're looking here is the public hearing on whether we allow the building of the retention pond, which is required to prevent flooding of your property and the retaining of water. And certainly, once it gets up to a certain level, there has to be a discharge so that you can control and direct the proper flow. But thank you very much for your consideration. Anybody with additional questions on council?
No, I just appreciate you coming. And I know this has been an ongoing issue on that whole street. And I just, I guess my only question, I'm a visual person. Is there any way you can show me where you, which house or which property or which properties are affected?
Yes. So let's see where I am.
Selena, do you have a cursor that might help her?
So if this is, so the pink is our, is the pink.
So the pink is the 200-foot buffer, but this is all of Unit 5? I'm assuming your property, you said you're on Sunset?
No, I'm actually, so that's a.
This one?
That's the drainage, so it'd be, that's.
This one right here?
No, I'm.
You can come back. Yes, let's see if this will work. This one, you think, maybe? Yeah.
So I'm actually.
Oh, it's not gonna, it's not gonna show on the TV?
Yeah.
This would be this corner detention?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Her property would be over here.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I'm actually, so I'm actually.
As you round, as you round Sunset and come.
Kind of that light pink area.
Right here, this one.
In the corner. Okay. Okay, perfect.
So I'm actually at the bottom of.
That's all flowing downhill to you.
Okay.
Directly into, yes. Yeah.
All right. Where's the pond going? Pond's in the corner.
Yes.
In the corner, in the dark pink area. She's in the, oh.
So there, I think there's two different ones on this one. The bottom part and the top part.
Both detention ponds.
Both.
Five.
Yeah. So there's one at the top of the development and then one at the bottom. And the engineer's actually here.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
There nobody else signed up? Is there anybody here that is intended to speak on that? Okay. If not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:13. At this time, it is also 7:13. We'll open up the second public hearing to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a request from Growthius Financial LTD to replat a portion of Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 6, and establish Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 6B by renumbering certain lots and changing the street name Paloma Drive to Bryce Wood Love and Bryce Way Peak. Is there anybody here to speak on at this public hearing? And none signed up? Okay. Then we will close this hearing at 7:14. At this time, we have citizens to be heard. Have any non-citizens to be heard? Okay. Having already completed item number five, at this point, we'll, unless there's an item to be pulled, looking for a motion, a second to approve consent agenda items, number six through eight, as written.
Motion.
Motion by Cato, second by.
I'll second.
Sanders. With no discussion required, all in favor of approving consent agenda items, number six through eight, as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we're looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number nine, as written, which will be the replat portions of Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 5, and establish Bryce Wood subdivision, Unit 5A by removing residential lots to increase to detention pond areas.
I make a motion.
Motion by Sanders. Second by.
I'll second.
Okay. And as we have discussed, and just to bring clarification, the need to have additional water retainage, the contractor's giving up two lots total so that to be able to increase the size of the detention area. So it'll be less construction and more preservation and prevention of water leaking over and creating silt for our neighbors. Is there any comments?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm glad the developer has finally realized he's not, he's not doing, getting stuff done correctly. I think this is a really good step forward. I know it's a little bit late for the residents in Beverly Hills, ma'am, but this appears to be a good solution. And I know our civil engineers have looked at the plan. And obviously, they will make sure that they implement this correctly. So anyways, I definitely support this. And I hope this solves the problem. And then, like you said, ma'am, I really do hope that we're able to help everybody make the developer actually clean up the problems that you guys have on your property, so.
Sir, any additions?
So maybe you can help me out with this? Will these ponds help our problem?
The retention will help in some way. It does not change the volume of water that we use. It will just mean more holding more water.
Okay, so it doesn't like change the flow of anything. Nothing's gonna change. It's gonna.
Oh, the engineer is here, so I'm not speaking on their behalf.
Right.
If you don't, if you don't mind, sir, yes. From my understanding, while he's coming up here, is that the larger, it's, you have X number of gallons of water that's coming off the property. That doesn't change with the rainfall.
Right.
How much we can retain, how much we can defer.
Right.
And so it will help, but nothing's gonna help if you have a rain that is so heavy that it overwhelms shore systems. I mean, I understand that, but.
Saladi Abseida Consultant Engineers, 6735 IH10 West, San Antonio, 78201.
Do these detention ponds, will they help our problem?
See, could you go to the bottom one, to the second one?
The bottom?
Yeah.
This one?
The picture on the left. Yeah. The picture on the left where it says detention, that what it was originally done. And when the rain comes in and it was the situation, so the developer, after we met with the city personnel and the city engineer, we decided that we're gonna enlarge the pond and that's what this is planned for. We took four lots out and we added it to the area of the pond. And beside what's really going out of the pond is what was originally going from the area, the watershed of the area. And we also, instead of concentrating that water in one point where it's coming out of the detention, we built in what's called dissipator channel. The dissipator channel is over 300 feet. Any water coming from the pond will go into that channel. And at the same level, it filled it up. It's about one foot deep. And will go out along the 300 feet at the same time, instead of concentrating, which is reduce velocity and reduce erosion and all that. And that's really what we done on this. On the second pond, we did the same thing. We added two more, area of two more lots to the pond. And we did the same thing with dissipator channel and so forth. With all due respect to everyone, including the concerned neighbors, and we, during construction, we're gonna see the milky or muggy water, no matter what. So, but afterward, hopefully, this all will go. At the same time, about the silt fences, we had one silt fence which was worked before. But when we had this situation, we added an extra silt fence, two silt fences behind each other just to capture as much as possible from the sediments.
I have a question. So I was looking at the notes and understand this property lies outside of the 100-year floodplain. But what is the detention pond built for? What kind of flood? Is it a 10-year, a 20-year?
The detention pond?
Yes.
Is forever?
Just, well, but in terms of a storm.
Oh, it's a 100-year.
It is built for a 100-year storm? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jen? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, oh, sure, yes.
So when you say 100-year, are you referring to the new design where you're going to add, you're gonna make these ponds larger? Or you're saying the currents?
This design, this design is for the 100-year.
The new design?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With no more discussion or questions, all in favor of approving item number nine, as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number 10, as written, which will be the replating of a portion of Bryce Wood 6 to establish 6B by renumbering certain lots and changing the street names of Paloma to Bryce Wood Love and Bryce Way Peak.
So moved.
Motion by Merchant, second by.
I'll second.
Thank you, Spring. Yeah, second by.
I don't know the reason for renaming the roads or anything, but I don't have any issues with this.
So the road, and we did get some commentary, I saw.
It's all good.
Through various means of reaching out to me. There were concerns that we were changing all of Paloma. No, it is not the Paloma. It is gonna be in Beverly Hills, remains Paloma. It's just as it cuts through, there's kind of gonna be an S curve, if you will. And that road, which originally was gonna connect directly to Beverly Hills with a emergency gate that would be locked except for in case of fire, natural disaster. Now it's actually gonna be rerouted a little bit and the gate is already there, I believe, correct, Justin? The gate was put there, but it's not actually gonna be a connected road with the new design. So as all the streets in Bryce Wood have Bryce Wood, Bryce Lane, Bryce Wood Park, Bryce Wood this, Bryce Wood that, they were, instead of calling it Paloma, they were naming that in the Bryce Wood section, but it'll still be Paloma in Beverly Hills. And not a connected road, so. It actually provides an extra layer of separation, if you will, for those that were concerned about the connection to Beverly Hills.
That's all I was wondering.
No concerns?
Comments? Concerns? Issues? Okay, with no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number 10, as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number 11, as written, which will be the preliminary and final plat pursuant to ordinances, Chapter 78 of the property on Shanefield Commercial at FM 1560.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Sanders, second by.
I'll give it a go.
Merchant? Okay. As we know, this property has already been a voluntary annexation to the city. Now we need to do the final plating on it. So take it away, sir.
So I have no questions. What questions I might have had were answered during the planning and zoning meeting previously on this topic, so. Pretty straightforward. I don't see any issues worth discussing.
Okay.
Agree with my colleague. I'm good.
Comments?
No comments.
Here, Jen? All right. With no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number 11, as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number 12, as written. This will be approving, we have a new route for the 58th Annual Holotus Corny Ball Parade. We have a motion?
Motion, Senator.
Motion by Sones, second by.
Second.
Cato? Okay. Little background information here. We have a new Bandera Road. And we have no traditional intersections left anymore. And so it's not so easy just to move southbound traffic into the northbound lane and then back over. We can get them over, but we can't get them back. And so in a nutshell, we're having to deal with Tech dot engineers, our safety people, our public works, PIO, various other groups and organizations within the city to come up with a plan that works. And in a nutshell, we are going to be, southbound, we'll go into northbound, just north of the city, kind of coming down, and then we're gonna be headed out 1560, taking a left onto 1560 and detouring all the way to 1604, at 15, 16, 1604. So those that are trying to get just past 1560, they'll have to go around and come back up northbound. Or if they're trying to get to HEB, they'll have to go out this way, come back to HEB. And again, it's a traffic nightmare for sure of a year, but it's, I believe this is the 60th year for the Corny Ball, 58th year for the parade, and it's a longstanding tradition, so we should have to deal with the new road construction as it is. We're working with Tech Dot and providing a five-year plan, correct, Justin? And so that we can establish the standard and have it just be a wash, rinse, and repeat for at least the next five years. But so we'll turn it, with that, we'll turn it over to Councilor Sones if you have questions or comment.
Well, the file is so big, it's still downloading on my laptop, which I think is indicative of how complicated this is. And I looked it over in preparation for the meeting, and to be honest with you, I'm confused. Which is neither here nor there. This is not my expertise. But I guess the question is, why does this route have to be different than what the Christmas parade is?
Well, the Christmas parade happens in Old Town. And this starts at the high school. The lineup's at the high school. So it's different because it's in different streets.
But I'm saying in light of, was there a discussion because of the way Bandera and 16 have changed that maybe we need to step back and not do it like we used to because of safety issues and traffic?
So that was actually part of a conversation. What if we, you know, did a lineup? But it's a significantly larger parade than the Christmas parade per se. Christmas parade has grown to maybe 4,000 or 5,000. We regularly have way over 10,000 people coming to this. And the idea of if we were to try to do that all in Old Town, it'd be overwhelming. It would be basically taking a large parade and making it, I'd say, instead of having the Indianapolis 500, we'd have the Indianapolis 50. And that's just not a really great race to go watch. But the, that was a conversation, but with that many packed in, we would not only have a really short parade, we would have a lot of safety issues. If somebody did have a health issue, having that many packed, people packed into Old Town is. It's not. So really, all we're talking about is we've always had to deal with traffic rerouting. It's a little bit of a headache for anybody trying to get through town. But after 60 years, people have come to realize that we do broadcast it and advertise it and put it out there. And we will post routes and some information, certainly to get out there. But we have to have police officers in the street and directing on people to turn right or left one, at one spot or another. but we have to have police officers in the street and directing them, people to turn right or left one, at one spot or another. It's just now we're gonna put it at this intersection instead of the, that intersection, as, if, if you will. And, um, it will be a slight detour around fifteen-sixty. It's not a huge, giant devastating detour. It's a, it's a, it's a hindrance for sure, but, uh, we are also limiting the number of floats that we have in the parade. And, uh, as soon as we get past checkpoints, we'll be opening up the lanes to, uh, minimize its impact on, on the community.
And I guess that's the biggest concern of everyone is safety, and, um, that's been a concern of mine over the years. I mean, I remember reading a couple of years ago that there was a fatality of an eight-year-old at a parade, in a Fourth of July parade. So, um, I get concerned with, I don't wanna get off the agenda item because this is the ma, this is the map, right?
Right.
And so if I, some of my safety concerns are, are not really with the route, but then I see safety barricades. So I guess if any of the city staff could just elaborate on, I, I don't remember seeing that on a map before and how you're thinking through and planning for this.
So, and I think Justin would probably speak, or Henry, uh, we definitely, so it's actually increased number of safety barriers actually for this plan.
Right, as Justin's coming, I'll say that we do have, uh, thirty-one officers as a, as a specific detail for, and along the route in specifically marked spots. Uh, the, the plan has been reviewed by Tech Dot. It has, our engineering, you know, has gone through it, our public works, our, uh, emergency management team for the city of Holos has gone through this. We've had several meetings, still have yet meetings to remain, and we will also have some measure of tabletop exercise discussions. We won't walk it out, but we will have some tabletop discussions regarding safety and the what-ifs, all that kinda stuff. I already have an appointment on my calendar with, uh, the fire chief regarding the what-ifs and those types of things. But the, uh, traffic control plan has been diligently discussed and thumb-wrestled and and, and the safety concerns that probably you have in your head as well as others, uh, a lot of those have been verbalized and addressed. So I yield to Justin.
So this traffic control plan does comply with our normal standards for what we would do. Um, you'll see across the traffic control, they're called type-three, large type-three road closed barricades. Those will be at every intersection, and then also every intersection, that's a roadway intersection, we'll have police officers there too. So we do do our very best to, for, to ensure safety. Um, obviously, there's always safety concerns with an event like this, but, and that's why we review it so thoroughly and go over it in so much detail. Other than that, if you have specific questions, I can go over them, but we do do our very best to make sure there's enough signage and then enough barricades to make sure that we don't have any incidents where we have vehicles in pedestrian areas.
Okay.
Well, I'd say to reduce the likelihood of an incursion, I, I don't know that we can totally prevent anything in life.
Yes. Councilor?
I have no questions with the plan. Uh, I do have a question, though. Do we expect this, uh, year's event to be smaller than prior years? Do we eliminate?
Uh, not that much smaller. I think we limited, we limited it to seventy-eight?
Uh, eighty total?
Eighty to-
Eighty max, and we have a hard stop date on stop, on signups.
In the past, it has been as large as roughly a hundred, and so it's, but often, there've been other times, been in the mid-eighties, so it's, it's capped and limited, but not that much smaller.
Part of that also, if I may, uh, is to ensure that we uphold our end of the agreement with Tech Dot regarding the closures and that we're off and open again at the appropriate time.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Right, so I guess this is gonna be the new normal, um, and I would assume with all those extra personnel, um, addressing traffic and safety, um, probably the price of this can be expected to go up. I know we don't know what the price is now, but I was just looking at the, you know, the history of, of the parade since twenty-twenty. Um, twenty-twenty is actually when it was canceled during, for COVID, but the prices have steadily gone up, and I know the public love the parade, and it is awesome, it is fantastic, but I think it's probably expectation for all of us sitting up here that, that the cost to pull this off this year is probably gonna be more expensive than last year.
More, but not super significantly and certainly within budget. Nothing that is, uh, I mean, we already have to have safety barriers. We're gonna have a few more barriers. The cost really isn't so much a barrier specific, but, you know, you got the, um, deployment and the retraction of them, you know, extra cones or extra barriers is, is, uh, per unit cost, but, uh, mobilization, demobilization is, is a big factor of that, which we gotta pay one way or the other. There are some extra officers, uh, am I correct, in our estimate of maybe ten or fifteen percent greater cost this year?
Uh, I, I don't know that I would, I, that I've done the math in, in order to say that in this form.
Okay. Uh, but, uh-
But it is an increase.
It's an increase for sure, but not a cost prohibitive increase, nothing that is raising the alarms of, we better go back 'cause we're gonna be short, uh, nothing in that realm.
And, and I do have a question, kind of rules of engagement, because the way that, that Bandera Road is laid out now, you have a whole lot of concrete between the north and southbound lanes. Are we going to allow residents on that concrete?
No.
Good.
I don't know.
We will still have the construction fence up to disincentivize people from being in that median area.
Okay.
There's always people that do things. There's people walking on highway bridges over sixteen oh four. I see it all the time, you know? That doesn't mean that they, they should, but we do what we can to prevent, uh, but, uh, I, I feel confident this is a well thought out and as, as safe a plan as it possibly can be, as expeditious as possible, and takes advantage of an expanded, uh, houseman road to handle the traffic. I, I think we're gonna be in good shape.
Okay.
Comments, sir?
No, I agree. We're gonna be in good shape for this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, okay. With no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number twelve as written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Our final two items are listed separately, but they are very much alike, uh, so looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number thirteen as written?
I'll make a motion.
Sanders, motion by Sanders, second by? Sure, I'll say. Merchant, okay. Uh, in a nutshell, we have two three-eighty agreements, one from two thousand fifteen, one from two thousand eighteen, represented by items number thirteen and fourteen. Dealing with number thirteen first for the two thousand fifteen agreement, the three-eighty agreement requires us to give back a, a percentage of property taxes as part of that agreement. The calculation, however, is very arduous. It is a percentage, uh, at twenty-five of, uh, the value increase. So you take the property, you minus out the base cost of what the original value of the property was, minus any that don't pay, minus any that are undeveloped, and then take twenty-five percent of that to balance. Uh, roughly speaking, uh, especially as the years have progressed, it turns out to be roughly twenty-three percent of the total value. So by restating this, of course, any change we do to an agreement, uh, it needs to be actually codified, if you will. And so if we just change the formula to say twenty-three percent of the assessed and paid value, then we can just pull the tax rolls and apply the twenty-three as opposed to five hundred and seventy-eight separate individual calculations and assessments of original property.
It's more than-
Uh, and that's, and that number grows, uh, with the, the new addition, so, uh, and does not include section six A. As you know, there's no, uh, agreement for, uh, uh, contingent in that, in that particular agreement. So, uh, this is just a mass simplification, and basically the pluses and minuses are, are basically rounding, if you will. Uh, and probably if there's any, if, if, if the developer gets any side on, on the rounding, we save a ton in saving about three weeks of Henry's life, uh, in, in doing all these calculations, at least. So that's really the nature of what this is, is just say, you know, instead of two plus two plus two plus two plus two plus two equals eighteen, we just write eighteen, uh, by way of example.
That helped me immensely, because when I looked at this item, I, I got the gist of it, right? You know, uh, doing all this ar, arduous math that we're just going to do twenty-three percent.
Yeah.
Uh, but I didn't have the, the, so what, the background, so that helped, so I, I have no questions. That helped me.
All right, uh-
And it would help me.
Yes.
By extension, me.
I guess that answers my question. I was gonna ask who, like, who asked for this change, for these changes?
Ultimately. Actually, I was sitting there, I was sitting there and I was explaining to Henry as we're trying to figure out, as he's trying to wrap his mind around, how does it start here, subtract out this, do this, add this back off here, and, and if you get to that, um, final dollar amount that we'd write a check for, for a hundred dollars, instead of taking twenty-five percent of, after all this math of ninety-six, if we take twenty-three percent of a hundred, we end up at the same amount. And so, uh, it's a lower percentage, which is in our favor, but there's no base amount that's taken out, so that's in his favor, but it's basically equal. So this was my suggestion, my recommendation. Uh, he said, oh, he's amicable to that, and so we, formality, we needed to bring it to you, make sure you're okay with it.
Yeah, and just, just to, to add a little, uh, character to that, uh, I had gotten to three different calculations, and all of them were right.
But all of them different.
But all of them different. So how can you?
How can that be possible?
Exactly, right? And so literally I had imported over, line by line, over four hundred individual line items and cross-checked them over, starting on the twentieth of January. Uh, that was my big headache day right before the ice.
Yeah.
Uh, but nonetheless, as we went through the thing, uh, so I would, I can, I literally could present three different, uh, products, results, to different people and say, do you think this is right? And what I wanted to do was make sure that we have one way of calculating, we have no records requests back to Bear County, no records reviews back through whatever numbers of documents and files to confirm whatever we perceived what happened over the years. If on this slide that you see on the screen, literally, we get the numbers from Bear County, we associate it with the unit that it is applicable to, and then we, we just simply apply the tax rate and the twenty-three percent. And it becomes really simple. We identify all the properties, the developer provides us the list, we do a simple cross-check, and then we're, we're good.
Right, uh, Sanders?
Developer's okay with all this?
Yes.
I'm assuming?
We, we absolutely had verbal agreement, uh, as we explained. And, and the-
Seems like the devil's in the details by doing this one by one by one by one, and I know it's a pain in the butt, but I guess if the developer's okay with potentially being a loser here?
It's, it's not a loser situation at all.
It's, it's, uh-
It's actually, it messes out.
In math, like, somebody's losing.
No, no, no. Well, actually, in math, in, in math, the city loses the measure of time that I put towards it.
Right, and there's a value in that.
Right, but as far as trading dollars, uh, and doing, uh, reimbursement type of situation, it actually does not, uh, produce a loss on the developer. There is a change in that the, the open space listed there, unit one and two, open space one hundred dollars, that seven cents return was not a seven cent return in the past because it's an undeveloped, uh, lot. There will be some, we'll say thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar lots that are not homes, so we were pulling those out. So there is a change, but from the very first calculation to the calculation that we're at, it's less than thirty thousand dollars worth of a difference.
In assessed value, not in-
Right.
Not in actual, so, so that one twenty-two thousand three thirty-nine that we'd actually cut a check for, uh, depending on the calculation, it might be as low as a hundred and twenty, maybe as high as a hundred and twenty-four. But after three months of expanding, or three weeks of his time, uh, the reality is it varies from year to year depending on how many undeveloped lots there are. So, uh, it's kinda like, this one figures out in this plot because of its original value, it turns out to be twenty-two point nine percent. This one turns out to be twenty, uh, three point three percent. This one turns out to be twenty-one point seven, but this one turns out to be twenty-four point one. And as we add those all up, and, and you get to the bottom, it's basically twenty-three percent. So instead of doing all these calculations and ending up with twenty-three percent of the total amount, if we just start with twenty-three percent, we, we end up at roughly the same number. Uh, and one year there might be a loss one side, one year there might be again on the other side, but either way, we, three weeks of his time.
It's negligible.
And it's negligible.
Okay.
It's just simple, it just simplifies, great, it simplifies.
Everybody's good, I'm good.
Okay.
What is the length of this agreement?
It's twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
One goes to twenty forty, one goes twenty forty-three.
Does that time start over with this new?
No, sir.
Thing?
No, sir.
All right, so we've been in this.
Yep.
Says I remember. This poor guy.
We got, yeah. Any other comments, buddy? Okay, so with no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number thirteen as written, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Uh, also looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action of item number fourteen, which is the exact same thing as number thirteen except for relative to the two thousand eighteen development agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Merchant, second by?
I'll second.
Sanders. Any comments?
None.
Sir?
Good for, it's good for the city, good for the developer, let's do it.
All right. With no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number fourteen, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. And with that, we come to the conclusion of this evening's meeting. We certainly appreciate everyone, and as a final point of privilege, I'd like to present the certificate of recognition for mayor for a day to Mr. Hudson Hart. Very much appreciate you.
Yay.
And, uh, go ahead, hit the game.
Can we get another?
We are in charge.
Can we get another phone over, uh?
Yes, we'll, we'll go down there and get a picture there for you. Seven forty-six. So, oh, yes, the time is, thank you. Seven forty-six.